Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'm going to call the Town of Batavia Planning Board meeting to order for Tuesday, April 16th. Who first pledge the flag? The flag is right there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Roll call, please, Kim.
Paul Marquesi. Paul McCullough.
Here.
Don Partridge.
Here.
Jonathan Long.
Here.
Steve Tanner.
Here.
Bruce Holly.
Here.
Brittany Whitcup.
Here.
Mike Dana.
Here.
Kathy.
Yes. We have a full board tonight, except for Paul. Paul Marquesi is not here yet, so Brittany will be voting for him if there is any. Well, there will be votes for setting public hearing, so she will be voting unless he does come in. Okay, did everyone get the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
They were very good. You put a lot into it. All right, is there any additions or corrections?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Paul McCullough. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Don Partridge. All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Opposed? Thank you. This is a public comment time on our agenda items. This is like a three-minute period where you could say something about what's on the agenda before we act on it, and it's open to anyone that has something to say. Would anyone like to speak? Very informal, just stand up and speak. Okay, it doesn't look like there is. If someone does come in and wants to speak, I will let them, if they didn't get here yet. So the first thing on our agenda is an application by Peter Yassis for a storage facility to be constructed at 8887 Alexander Road. He's going to use this for the storage of milling, salt, and equipment. He needs a special use permit, a seeker review, and site plan review. Mr. Yassis, would you like to tell us about your project? This is an introduction for us, but we've all had your information. So tell us what you want to tell us about your project.
So, we do a lot of snow removal in Batavia, and it's very hard for us to go back to our base in Byerun to reload. It takes a lot of time. We rent space now in the city. We'd like to own something, so this property become available. We'll have a 100-by-50 storage facility to put our loaders and our snow removal equipment in the summer. We'll put our toys and whatever in the winter. We have a 30-by-30 salt shed, and we'll probably have a couple small piles of topsoil and noise.
And this is on Alexander Road, right by the railroad?
You go by the railroad, there's Viotech. Then there's like a little, it's like a wetlands. Then there's a property right next door. It's a dilapidated house.
Right.
And barn, and we propose to clean that all out, start from scratch.
Oh, that'll be nice.
I think. I mean, if anybody goes through Byerun, you'll see that we do keep our facilities pretty nice, thanks to my wife. So, other flowers and trees and...
Don't promise too much.
That's all you have. But I'm just saying that it won't be a prank.
Yeah, yeah, there is a house that's been in bad shape.
Yes.
So are you going to buy the land with the house on it?
Yes.
And so you're going to take the house right down?
For sure.
Wow. You all know what we're talking about?
No, we haven't.
Everybody's not really like they know exactly where it is.
And this is going to be like a pole barn?
Yes, a 50-by-100 pole barn.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I just, I, we haven't, I haven't seen the site plan. Have you did? Can we see a site plan yet?
Uh-huh.
I didn't, I didn't look at it, I'm sorry.
I think it all came together. There were like three.
Was it?
Yeah.
Um, I assume that, I assume that you're away from all the wetlands and that like the millings and everything else will have protection around them so that you don't have migration into the wetlands.
So we ran into a, not a problem, but a nosing resident. As long as I don't crush them, we screen them, and actually, you're okay to go.
Yeah.
And by the time they get there, they'll probably already screened, and we're not going to have like lots of... Okay, we live in Byerun. It's a lot of that's going to be for our own use, but if somebody wants to buy them, I'm not going to run from Byerun to Batavia to save you three or four ton and then go back home. If we're there, which we shouldn't be, but again, a lot of it's going to be for our own use, but if it's there and somebody wants to buy it, here it is. You can't buy them until Cory's no more.
Will the salt be contained?
Yes, it'll be in a 30-by-30 enclosed barn. Yep, with a paved floor.
Any other questions? What we can do tonight, we have to have a public hearing because it's a special use permit. So we want, I'm proposing May 21st. That would give us enough time to get the seeker lead agency back. We could do it all in one night.
Yep.
So is that, does that fit in your calendar, May 21st? Okay, so right now, I need a motion to set the public hearing for May 21st.
So moved.
So moved.
Steve and?
Brittany.
Brittany.
Brittany, okay.
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Don? Don?
Don?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Paul McCullough?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Okay, now I would like a motion to, that was to set the public hearing. Now we need to seek lead agency, and I would have the seeker replies come back by the 20th so we can deal with everything on the 21st.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Paul?
Second.
Seconded by Brooks. Roll call, please.
Paul?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Yassis, we'll see you on the 21st, and we have your email address, so if we have questions, we'll ask you, okay? And our engineer, Steve, have you got anything to add to this?
No, it's summed it all up.
Pardon me?
It's summed it all up. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay, as long as it meets engineering approval, and we go through the seeker and the special use permit, we'll be all set.
All good.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Yep.
Okay, next we have East Coast Bidway. This was a former Polar Wave on the Harloff Road. This is a new application. We've talked about it before because it was a different project. This one, do you want to tell us about it, Jason?
Sure. Really, it's no different than we had talked about before.
We had two parcels.
Oh, okay, yeah, we did modify that idea. It seemed like everybody was getting confused about projects going on on both properties that used to be there, so it's a simpler revision now, just doing exactly what I already did years ago with you guys, the exact same thing, just on the Polar Wave property. Honestly, no different than what we did back in 2005 to 2015 or whatever, so just looking to come back and do the same exact plan again, so.
Okay, we'll have some work to do on this because it's a special use permit, and we'll look at that when the time comes. Right now, what we have to do is the same thing we just did for the last gentleman. We need to set a public hearing and seek lead agency, and the lead agency status takes a month, so right now, we'll set the public hearing if it's agreeable to everyone on May 7th.
So moved.
Moved by Don.
Second.
Seconded by Steve. Roll call, please.
Don?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Okay, now we need to seek lead agency, the seeker that seeker.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Brett. Seconded by?
I'll find out.
Paul? Roll call, please.
Brittany, yes. Paul?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Okay, I know you're frustrated because it takes time, but it's the way the, it's the way the government works.
It's all right. It's been a lot of different communication.
We will do this the right way, and it's to hold a public hearing. We're holding it on the 7th, which is a light agenda date for us, so we expect, we expect some people.
Do you know what night of the week that is? Is that Tuesday?
It'll be a seven o'clock.
Tuesday.
Okay.
On Tuesday, the, what did I say, May 7th? May 7th.
Okay.
Okay?
So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next thing is a new project, the Wharton Dyke Road Solar Project. This is an application for a special use permit for the construction and operation of a solar energy system at 9327 Wharton Dyke Road. They need seeker review, site plan review, and special use permit, so we need to set a public hearing on this, but we first let's hear about the project, and you are Will?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yeah.
And?
Casey Rose. Casey Rose.
Casey Rose?
Yeah.
Slime, nice name.
Thanks, thanks to my parents.
Okay, tell us a little bit about this. This is new to us.
Sure, I'll get us started here, but I'll let Mark and Casey do most of the talking. Will Mievas from New Leaf Energy, I'm the project developer here for this project, as you mentioned, Mark and Casey from Erwin Anthony, our engineering firm. Tonight, we're going to be presenting to you our 9327 Wharton Dyke Road project, the five-megawatt community solar farm located on Wharton Dyke Road, obviously. The site is, you know, we're going to be doing some pretty substantial upgrades to the utility here. There's currently two-phase on Wharton Dyke Road, and so we're going to be doing about a 9,000-mile stretch of double-phase to three-phase upgrades, and then we'll head east towards the substation about three miles. We'll reduce some minor upgrades there on the substation just outside of downtown Batavia. Despite the distance, we selected this site because it is kind of a little bit more off the beaten path, it has natural screening already around it. You know, the landowner has, you know, grandkids and great-grandkids who visit the property, which is currently in, they're leasing this portion and this portion to a local farmer. We've made our design kind of make sure that we can have the farmers still have access to this rear field, and that we're not really changing kind of the view from her backyard, which again, as I mentioned, is visited by her grandchildren and great-grandchildren. That's where they saw the eclipse, she told me. Yeah, and so we really have, you know, there's no major tree clearing, and again, the site was selected due to its ability to kind of be hidden away a little bit. I know that that's important these days with these projects, and so I'm going to let Mark and/or Casey really kind of take you through some of the details of the site, but happy to answer any questions that they aren't able to. Thank you.
So as Bill mentioned, this is a 5.0-megawatt AC ground-mounted community solar energy system. It's located on a property that is 51.3 acres, and the project itself only encompasses 15.74 acres, which includes the fenced array, the access driveway, and the equipment pads. The fenced array is 15.525 acres in size, and it has a driveway that is 435 feet long and is 20 feet wide, and it's previous driveway, and then the equipment pads total only 0.051 acres, and we only have 0.06 acres of tree clearing. We have three new utility poles and ground-mounted equipment pads for interconnection, and the project is located in an agricultural residential zoning district. Our setbacks are from, to the north, we have 75 feet to the fence line, and then to the east, we have 764 feet to the fence line from the property line. To the south, we have 464 feet, and then to the west, which is also the front, we have 200 feet, and this is all within the zoning requirements. Our max height is 10 feet, and then our max coverage is 30.7%, which includes the fence, the driveway, and the equipment pads. The construction is environmentally friendly, and only minor amounts of excavation and grounding work will be required. There are wetlands on the site, but there's no impact to them. Upon completion, the project will have a honeybee forage mix of clover, and during construction, about 50 vehicle trips per day, which includes 25 arriving and 25 exiting for deliveries and employees, and operation hours are Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. After construction, the system only operates during daylight hours, and lastly, most big important thing is that there's no energy storage batteries proposed.
Thank you.
Question?
Yep.
Is it stationary or tracking panels?
It's tracking.
It's tracking.
Tracking. Which brings up the next question, is on the detail sheets, you had mentioned 10 feet, but on the detail sheets, it says 15-foot match for the tracking panels, so which one is it?
That's the latter.
Yeah, I believe it should be about 10 feet.
Did we, did we, did we, 10 feet?
Yeah. I think we have 15, just in case it changes at some point.
Yeah. Yeah, the max height is usually 10 feet, but I believe that just like the last project we did here, we wanted to make sure that our detail sheets give us enough wiggle room there, should the, you know, ultimate sort of owner-operator want to go with a slightly higher panel, or, you know, the design could change.
15 feet fits with their code, right, Steve?
Yeah, yeah, so we want to sort of permit per the max of your code, but I think the kind of the message here is that what we're expecting is to be is about a 10-foot high through at full tilt.
I know that sometimes we, sorry if I speak.
Oh, of course.
I know that sometimes that we request like the view shots. I did look at this one, you know, in person and on Google Earth. Google Earth first, and then I went out. The only question I have regarding the actual site is, we have some sites where they do get a little bit elevated in the middle, and this one's the same way, where it's about 15 feet higher in the middle than the road. Do you anticipate there being any views of those panels from the roadway, given the elevation change?
Well, I think that's a realistic expectation, that you will see it in limited spots along Wharton Dyke Road, and your code requires the submission of some visual view shot analysis, visual simulations.
Right.
Which we are willing to do with some input from the board and from the engineering department. That's kind of the...
I just assumed the reason you did it is because, like you said, it's mostly surrounded by trees, and most of them are very mature trees.
They're, it's mostly screened by existing vegetation, which is deciduous in nature, so in the leaf flop condition, it will be a little bit more visible than the leaf on condition, but I think it might, I think it might be moved the board to ask for a visual simulation or two, probably from the road, and where it's most visible from the road, which is like only one or two spots.
Basically, your new entrance.
Yeah, the new entrance, and there's also this...
Little clearing up near the house.
Yeah, up to the south of the house, there's a clearing. That clearing goes through into the field, so somewhere south of the house where it's most visible through from Wharton Dyke Road. So I would, I would recommend, if I was to make a recommendation, I'm not telling you what to do, there would be at least those two locations.
I like that idea. Take this as a request.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I looked at it. I had to really, any other locations where it would even make sense to do the visual simulations?
Yep. Agreed. Whether we can get that initiated, probably have them done by the public hearing.
It's, I believe we're, you're shooting for May 21st?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I think they should be able to do that, if we get it going, so.
Yeah. So actually, we can have them before the public hearing. Very likely.
Thank you for only three polls.
Yeah, three polls. It's on our first rodeo.
Can you explain more of the upgrades? Is that, that's just making the two-phase into three-phase, and it's using the same poles that are in place, and it's just upgrading that electrical service?
Yeah, the expectation would be they use the same poles. Now, National Grid is really going to be in the driver's seat of that, but because there's two-phase there, I'm imagining that they'll be able to add a third line pretty easily, but, you know, we're still in the process of getting like the engineering study and everything back from National Grid. But everything along 33, there's three-phase there already, and then the substation, as probably all of you know, is pretty, it's pretty large, and we'll be doing, you know, some upgrades in there to, you know, just accommodate the system.
Okay, anything else? Steve and Matt, have you got anything for us?
No, I think they summed it up well. They're, the existing, or the site plan provided has minimal clearing, so that's a nice option, and Steve's comment about the visual, that would be something we would recommend as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we need to have a seeker and a public hearing. I'm proposing May 30, May 21st for the public hearing, because the seeker lead agency will be back by then. Is that, all right with you? Okay, for the seeker review, could we have a resolution or a motion?
So moved.
Who's that? John?
Second.
And that was Brooks. Roll call, please.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Okay, now I need a motion for a public hearing for May 21st, and we already have one on the 21st, so we'll set it at 7:15.
So moved?
Second.
Steve and Brittany. Steve and Brittany.
Steve and Brittany, okay. Roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Okay, we know how to reach you, and we will if we need to, okay? Plus, we'll be working with the engineers to make sure they have everything they need.
Yep.
And just so you know, we're not expecting everything to be wrapped up that night.
You what?
Unlike Mr. Yassis, we're not expecting everything to be wrapped up that night.
Well, we'll see how it goes.
We're not that after this thing.
If we, if we need to have you back, we have a meeting before that, yeah.
Oh, we expect it'll be a few fucking more meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not a lot of comments.
Well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Okay, now Matt Fitzgerald, an attorney with Hatters and Seekers, is here. He has made presentations to us before, and he's doing the seeker at the egg park on the CH4 biogas and hood, so he's going to make another presentation to us, and we have representatives from CH4 biogas.
Good to see everyone again, Matt Fitzgerald. So just to give you an update on where CH4 biogas is with respect to the seeker, the seeker lead agency packages did go out. That started the 30-day clock for comments to come in. No comments were actually received within the 30 days. The DEC did send comments just recently, within the last week or so, I think the DEC's comments came in better late than never. We've given them to the applicant, the applicant will be able to address them. Where we're at at this point is, the engineering department has prepared a draft letter just with some final remaining comments to the applicant for the applicant to address, but with where the application is at, and with the seeker comments from the outside agencies received, we think it's time for where we can take any comments and questions the board may have right now, or in the next couple of days, if you want to mull it over and think of some comments, questions, concerns on this project, we'll fold them into a letter to the applicant, something they can respond to in advance of a public hearing, which if the board was so inclined, it could schedule for a May 7th meeting. We'll take any public comments received at that meeting, ask that the applicant responds to them. If no public comments occur at the meeting, great, but otherwise, that would be the path forward on that. So I would just say at this point, you're good to schedule a public hearing for May 7th, if you'd like to move forward with that. If you've got anything on your mind right now that you'd like the applicant to dig into between now and the public hearing, feel free to ask. I'll say that I know the full applicant team isn't here, so I wouldn't expect them to be able to answer any questions necessarily right now, but it's something they can at least take back to the rest of their full team.
Okay, and this has nothing to do with hood. We're taking this as a summer project?
That's correct. I'm happy once we get through the biogas component, if we're like to hear an update on where we're at on hood, I'm happy to give that presentation, but just to avoid confusion, I just wanted to hit the biogas, CH4 biogas project first.
Okay, any questions? I'd entertain a motion to set the public hearing for May 7th. I'll put you on first before the motocross, because that might be long.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
A motion by Paul McCullough?
Second.
Seconded by Steve Karen. Roll call, please.
Paul?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Don?
Epstein.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Okay, we'll see you then on, on May 7th. I will send out the notices to the property owners within the 500 feet.
Sure. Okay, that sounds great. Do you want me, I don't know if there's anything else on the agenda after this, do you want me to give you the update on where hood is at as well, in terms of its seeker process? Happy to do so, if not, that's all.
At that meeting?
No, right now.
Right now would be great, yeah.
Sure, sure, so with the HP hood project, so remember at the same time that these lead agency packages went out for CH4 biogas, the packages were distributed for the HP hood expansion project. The two agency comment letters that were received on that project were from Genesee County and then the city of Batavia. Genesee County expressed concerns with the build water capacity for both this project and the egg site and the county generally. As I think this board is probably aware, the county is in the midst of its, what it's calling its Phase Two of its water development project, where they're working on building that out, and it's my understanding that the goal is to have that fully built out by next summer. That's, that's the timeline as I understand it. So if that comes to pass, it's my understanding that there actually wouldn't be any conflict with the hood project. We've been working with the county on their concerns. The hood, the hood and county teams are both looking at the possibility of any mitigation that may be needed, just to get over the hump of hood coming online and the county finishing up Phase Two of its water project. That may look like something like just another water tank on the site. Those details are being fleshed out, and that's what we're chasing down on the water We've been working with the county on their concerns. Uh, the hood, the, the hood and county teams are both looking at the possibility of any mitigation that may be needed, just to get over the hump of hood coming online and the county finishing up phase two of its water project. That may look like something like just another water tank on the site. Uh, those details are being fleshed out, and that's what we're chasing down on the water side in the context of the seeker review. So seeker did its job right, we sent out the notices, it fleshed out any of the issues, and they're being worked through on the water side. On the city side, something very similar, the city expressed concerns about the capacity of its existing wastewater treatment plant. The relationship between the town and the city with respect to that plant is, obviously it goes back a number of years, it's fairly complicated, there's an agreement in place that deals with how capacity is allocated within that plant. Uh, I will say from an environmental impact issue, it appears that there is sufficient capacity in the plant for what hood is going to do. It's just a question of there needs to be further discussions between, uh, the town and the city with how the background of all of this is gonna be negotiated and allocated and things like that. So from an environmental standpoint, we're working on hashing out the details of that, uh, but really, this is gonna come down to a business discussion between the town and the city. So those issues are also being chased down in parallel with the water issues. Uh, the hood team is well aware of all of these issues, we've met with the hood team, um, I've met with Steve, who's met with the hood team as well, so all of those items, we're trying to move them forward as expeditiously as possible to prevent hood from getting jammed up there, but again, we're working through those, and I'll continue to keep the board updated as those move forward. Yes?
Wonder exactly, do they wanna go online with it?
Hood is looking to go online in terms of the actual timeframe when it would start drawing water and putting out its increased sewer. I believe it would be right after the county, it's next summer as well, and I'm just looking at Steve to see.
Yeah, next summer.
Next summer as well, so it lines up with when phase two is expected to come online. The question is, is phase two gonna come online on schedule, and the hope is yes, but the thought is, what do we need to do just in case, right? So I'll say that the, the county, um, the GCEDC, hood, uh, myself and Steve have been having conversations just to figure out what do we need to do to make this work, and those have been productive conversations that have moved forward well. So more to come on that, but it is moving forward.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Steve, or Matt, do you have anything to say on that?
No, I think Matt summed it up well. You know, the city, with the wastewater, uh, we meet, you know, every couple of weeks, um, the city had undertaken a sewer capacity headwork study, which they've, um, completed on data and everything, so, you know, we're at a point where we can negotiate the additional capacity and, and, you know, future work, um, you know, to make sure that we're getting to the next level, similar to the county water program.
Thank you. Biogas, did you want to say anything, or you were just here to look, to listen?
Um, partly just to listen, but certainly I'll entertain any questions anybody might have, but I guess Matt did ask, and there weren't any at that time, but, uh, thank you. We very much appreciate all your time working on this with us and, uh, help, helping us get through the process.
Thank you.
I have just one question, which is, um, any idea when we will get the letter, the comment letter?
Well, it's made easier by the lack of comments here, so I'll work with Steve and his team, I think.